Good evening and welcome to the Coon Rapids City Council Meeting for Tuesday, November 16th, 2021. If you could please rise and join us for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please call the roll.
Councilmember Grisgoviac.
Here.
Councilmember Ray Rauer. Councilmember Hernandez Jr.
Here.
Councilmember Geisler.
Here.
Councilmember Johnson.
Here.
Councilmember Carlson.
Here.
Mayor Cook.
Here.
One absent Ray Rauer.
Thank you. First item is to adopt this evening's agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Geisler, second by Johnson to adopt the agenda. Any discussion or corrections? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, and the agenda is adopted. And we have two proclamations this evening, and the first one is declaring a Small Business Saturday. Small businesses employ 47.1% of the employees in the private sector in the United States. 88% of U.S. consumers feel a personal commitment to support small businesses in the wake of the pandemic, and 92% of small business owners have pivoted the way they do business to stay open during the pandemic. Additional information about Small Business Saturday can be found online at shopsmall.com. And we have a proclamation for Small Business Saturday. Whereas, the government of Coon Rapids, Minnesota celebrates our local small businesses and the contributions they make to our local economy and community. And whereas, according to the United States Small Business Administration, there are 31.7 million small businesses in the United States. They represent 99.7% of firms with paid employees, and they are responsible for 65.1% of net new jobs created from 2000 to 2019. And whereas, small businesses employ 47.1% of the employees in the private sector in the United States. 88% of U.S. consumers feel a personal commitment to support small businesses, and 92% of small business owners have pivoted the way they do business to stay open during the pandemic. I've heard some of this before. And whereas, 97% of Small Business Saturday shoppers recognize the impact they can make by shopping small. 85% of them also encouraged friends and family to do so too. And whereas, I've never seen so many percentages in a proclamation. Here we go, a little bit more. Whereas, 56% of shoppers reported they shopped online with a small business on Small Business Saturday in 2020, and more than 50% of consumers who reported shopping small endorsed a local business on social media, or shopped at a local business because of a social media recommendation. And whereas, Coon Rapids, Minnesota supports our local businesses that create jobs, boost our local economy, and preserve our communities. And whereas, advocacy groups as well as public and private organizations across the country have endorsed the Saturday after Thanksgiving as Small Business Saturday. Now, therefore, I, Jerry Cook, Mayor of the City of Coon Rapids, on behalf of the City Council and citizens of our city, officially proclaim November 27th, 2021, as Small Business Saturday in the City of Coon Rapids, and urge the residents of our community and communities across the country to support small businesses and merchants on Small Business Saturday and throughout the year. Proclaimed the 16th day of November, 2021. And I know the Anoka area chambers and the Metro, Metro North chamber are both doing things to support small businesses in the area, and we just really encourage everyone to shop local, so.
I'm glad you made it 100% through that.
I thought about interjecting, and 100% of Coon Rapids supports. And what, 67% of all statistics are made up on the spot?
Good job.
All right. So there, so we've done that. And next, we have another proclamation, but we actually have people to receive this proclamation, I believe. We have some DECA representatives here. If you would like, why don't we meet out front, and I'll bring the mic around. So just come up to the front of the dais here. Over here, and then we'll face kind of one of those cameras back there. Hi, how are you?
Good, how are you?
Very good, very good. All right. You don't want this one. This is all the percentages.
Yeah, this, the other one's 50% shorter.
All right, well, welcome to the council chambers. You are from the DECA, from Coon Rapids High School. So I will read the proclamation, and then I'll give you an opportunity to kind of tell us what's going on around with DECA. Whereas, DECA is an association of marketing students which prepare the students to be academically prepared, community-oriented, professionally responsible, and experienced leaders. And whereas, the mission of DECA is to prepare emerging leaders and entrepreneurs in marketing, finance, hospitality, and management. And whereas, DECA's guiding principles are designed to explain how DECA fulfills their mission. And whereas, DECA enhances the co-curricular education of members through a comprehensive program that integrates into classroom instruction, applies learning, connects to business, and promotes competition. And whereas, DECA's activities assist in the development of academically prepared, community-oriented, professionally responsible, experienced leaders. And whereas, DECA's attributes and values describe the organization's priorities and standards, including competence, innovation, integrity, and teamwork. And now, therefore, I, Jerry Cook, Mayor of the City of Coon Rapids, officially proclaim November 15th through 19th, 2021, as DECA Week in the City of Coon Rapids. Proclaimed the 16th day of November, 2021. And I would like you to introduce yourselves, and if you want to leave the masks on, or if you want to pull the mask, whatever you want to do, however you're comfortable.
I'm Sidney Holloway. I'm a junior at Coon Rapids High School.
I'm Jordana Bradford. I'm a junior at Coon Rapids High School.
And what kind of projects are you working on, or what's going on? What are you doing with DECA right now? What should we know?
Right now, we're partnering with a local food shelf, and we're doing a hygiene drive where people are supposed to bring hygiene products to their first hour.
Oh, hygiene?
Yeah.
I thought you said hiding. I'm going, what? Okay, well, that's cool. And any travels this year, or you wait for next year to travel?
We just got, we just got back from our first competition in person for two years. It was kind of just like a leadership competition that prepared like all the first-year members and everything, and then soon we're going to be getting ready for districts, and then we actually get to do that in person this year, but I don't think we get to travel. We might get to travel out of state this year. We can cross our fingers for internationals, but we'll have to see.
Awesome. I know that DECA provides so many opportunities for you, and I know my, one of my sons went to New York with DECA when he was at high school there, and it's a, it's a great program. Anything else you want to share?
I don't think so.
Thank you very much for coming in.
Thank you for having us.
To bring back. Thank you very much.
Thank you for having us.
Take care. All right, yes, many great opportunities in that organization. And we are up to approval of the minutes from November 3rd. Mayor. Councilmember Carlson.
Motion to approve the minutes.
Second.
Motion by Carlson, second by Grisgoviac to approve the minutes from the November 3rd, 2021 meeting. Are there any corrections or discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, and that motion carries. We have four items on our consent agenda this evening. The first one, which is item four on this evening's agenda, is to accept the quarterly financial report. The financial summary of all funds for the third quarter and the quarterly enterprise fund statements are attached for a review, and they're all in our council packet here. So we're looking, I see. Assuming council has no specific questions, no action is necessary other than to acknowledge receipt of this report. So we're just looking to acknowledge receipt. All right. Item five, which is the second item on the consent agenda, is to approve a Class A on-sale Sunday 2:00 a.m. and tavern liquor license for the Barrel House Bar and Cafe, 11496 Martin Street. An application for on-sale liquor licensing for the Barrel House Bar and Cafe located at 11496 Martin Street, formerly Pappy's Cafe, has been submitted by Mr. Drew Rasmussen. The license and investigation fees have been paid. The police department is conducting the background investigation as required by the city's code. A certificate of insurance evidencing liquor liability and workers' compensation coverage has been received. Approval of the license will be conditioned upon the completion of a successful background investigation and Anoka County Environmental Services issuing a food service license. So we're looking to approve the issuance of a Class A on-sale Sunday 2:00 a.m. and tavern liquor license to the Barrel House Incorporated, doing business as the Barrel House Bar and Cafe located at 11496 Martin Street Northwest contingent upon completion of a successful background investigation Anoka County Environmental Services issuing a food service license. Next item on our consent agenda is to approve the final payment to North Valley Incorporated. We're looking, there was a change order for an additional ADA pedestrian ramp in the Thorpe Park parking lot that was added to this project. The actual project costs were more than the final contract amount due to quantity adjustments from the original bid. So we're looking to approve change orders and final payment to North Valley Incorporated in the amount of $38,323.63 for Project 21-3 Miscellaneous Trail Reconstruction. Item seven, which is the fourth and final item on our consent agenda, is to approve final payment to Redstone Construction LLC for Project 13, I'm sorry, 18-13A Coon Rapids Boulevard Historic Highway 10 Pedestrian Bridge Rehab. There was a change order to provide a sack rub concrete surface finish to the bridge barrier railing, and that rub finish is a process that fills small concrete surface bug holes and popouts, and was determined to be feasible by the contractor and beneficial to the finished product during construction. The actual project costs were less than the final amended contract amount due to slight quantity adjustments from the original bid. So we're looking to approve the change order and final payment to Redstone Construction LLC in the amount of $10,287.45 for Project 18-13A Coon Rapids Boulevard Historic Highway 10 Pedestrian Bridge Rehab. And that is our consent agenda.
Mr. Mayor, I'll move the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion by Geisler and a second by Carlson. Any discussion or any questions on anything here?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Grisgoviac.
I had something on the, the fund one he had here, and that's the compensated absence fund balance is $2.8 million. Seems like that's a high number and is increasing. Is there anything that we can do or think about doing, limiting our liability in that fund?
Well, Mayor and Council, certainly Fran can maybe talk to you about some of the trends related to that fund. We're obligated to cover the compensated absences in that fund. Generally, there hasn't been a lot of changes, although what we have noticed more recently, primarily due to pandemic conditions, as people didn't use as much vacation this past year and a half or so as they typically would, and so people are tending to carry over higher balances. They're still subject to maximum carryovers, but whereas, they might have been well below that in some years. Now they're probably carrying closer to their max, just because it didn't go on as much vacation as it would have previously. So I would expect that to kind of average out over time, and it should improve from that perspective, but I would ask Fran to mention anything else if she's aware of something else in that fund that I'm not thinking of.
I think that covers why it has increased over the last couple of years, but every time we have a cost of living increase, the balances are based on current salaries, not past salaries. So when you have higher salaries, then the accrual is going to be higher to cover those salaries every year. So I don't perceive it going down unless people start taking more and more vacations.
Using up their time. Okay, that makes sense. The less vacations over the last year and a half, that makes sense.
Ms. Lenzmeyer, the Barrel House Bar and Cafe, does that represent a change in ownership too then? Do you remember? Because I know Pappy's, no, okay, that's fine.
I can get back to you on that. I'm not sure.
Okay, yeah, selfish reasons. We eat breakfasts a few times a month. I'm just kind of wondering what's going to change.
You're worried about losing the breakfast spot?
Well, yeah. Right now, I walk in, they go, the usual, yeah. All right, we have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. Is there any other discussion or questions? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, and that motion carries. We are looking at item eight, which is to consider adoption of ordinances 2256 and 2257, and resolutions 21-116 and 21-117 setting 2022 fees and charges. And these are the ones that were introduced at the last council meeting. Does anybody have any questions on these? Or does anybody want to put it forward, or?
Here are.
Thank you, Councilmember Johnson.
I will move the staff recommendation with respect to all of these fees. Do you want them separately moved?
I think we need to conduct a public hearing first.
Yes, please.
And then I would ask that we probably take them individually.
All right, then that's on me. I am sorry. I was, okay. See, normally when we're going to do a public hearing, it says it up on the top, and I usually highlight it. I missed it, sorry. Okay, so, does anybody have any questions of staff before we open the public hearing? Hearing none. We are going to open the public hearing for anybody that wants to address counsel on the adoption of ordinances 2256, 2257, and resolutions, I'm not even sure which ones we're doing the public hearing on here, but it's regarding the liquor license fees. Is anybody here to address counsel on the public hearing for liquor license fees? Hearing none. We're going to close the public hearing, and now we'll go back to Councilmember Johnson.
All right, so we'll take these one at a time. I would move adoption of ordinance 2256 revising certain license fees, service fees, and related charges effective January 1, 2022.
Second.
All right, we have a motion by Johnson and a second by Grisgoviac. Did you need all of those separately?
I would ask that you would do those separately.
Okay, all right. Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Does anybody have any discussion on that one? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, and that motion carries.
Next, I'd move adoption of ordinance 2257 establishing permit and inspection fees for building inspections division as authorized by Minnesota Statute Section 16B.62 subdivision one effective January 1, 2022.
Second.
Motion by Johnson, second by Grisgoviac. Any question, I'm sorry, any discussion on that? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, and that motion carries.
Next, I'd move adoption of resolution 21-116 establishing certain fees and charges effective January 1, 2022.
Second.
Motion by Johnson, second by Grisgoviac. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, and that motion carries.
And finally, I'd move adoption of resolution 21-117 establishing certain fees and charges for the use of CTN studio facilities effective January 1, 2022.
Second.
Motion by Johnson, second by Grisgoviac. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, and that motion carries. Thank you. And we are on to item nine, which is to consider resolution 21-118 establishing 2022 fees and charges for use of city park facilities and recreation activities. Changes for the 2022 fees and charges for the use of the city park facilities. We're looking at Riverview and Saint Creek Community Meeting Spaces will be charged at the same rate as the river when building. These community meeting spaces are popular seasonal rental options will be available for rentals March through November, as these spaces are used as warming houses December through February. The damage deposit required for rental of Crooked Lake and Lyons Coon Creek Park shelters was decreased from $150 to $100 as the reduced amount covers any cleaning costs requires, required. And then for all city park building rentals, all cancellations will be subject to a service fee of 5% of the total amount paid towards the reservation. Equipment rental fees were updated as to only include items that are billed separately from the fee charged for renting the athletic facility. The fee for portable toilet rental increased from $60 to $85 per unit, and the fee for chalk rental increased from $6 to $10 per bag. Both these fees were increased to reflect, to reflect actual costs. A new fee was included for portable toilet cleaning of $45 per unit. Does anybody have any questions on that?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Johnson.
I'm assuming that the reason that this one doesn't have a public hearing is because there's no related ordinance that goes with it. Is that right?
I think it's the liquor fees require a public hearing. These do not.
Right, okay. With that, Mr. Mayor, I'd move the staff recommendation, and that is the adoption of resolution 21-118 establishing certain fees and charges for the use of city park facilities effective January 1, 2022.
Second.
Motion by Johnson, second by Hernandez Jr. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, and that motion carries. Item 10 is to consider planning case 21-43, consider resolution 21-114 approving, I'm sorry, approving preliminary and final plat for Coon Rapids Fire Station Number 311091 Mississippi Boulevard. The site is eight, do we need to do a, we already, we already did a thing on this, didn't we? Haven't we had a council meeting?
Not at a council meeting, no.
Okay. Mr. Harlecker, did you want to run through this?
Yeah, I can do that.
You know, it might make sense since we've seen it at planning commission, we've seen it at workshops, but it might be good to televise something at the council meeting on this.
Councilmembers and Mayor, this is, excuse me, preliminary and final plat for Fire Station 3 Development Parcel. It's located at the corner of 111th and Mississippi Boulevard. This is the entire site here. The fire station will be going up on the north half of the site. This is really the north half of the site. On the, on the previous air photo, this was the area that was not covered by trees. The site is 7.82 acres, the total of Lot 1 and then Outlet A. Lot 1 is 4.57 acres, and Outlet A is 3.25 acres. Outlet A is being plotted as an outlot, so at some point in the future, it'll be developed, and at that time, it'll be plotted into a regular lot. The planning commission did consider this request at their meeting on October 21st. No one spoke at the public hearing, and the commission recommended unanimously to recommend approval of a preliminary plat. This is a proposed final plat. It is consistent with the preliminary plat, and with that, planning commission recommended approval of the preliminary plat and resolution 21-114 granting final plat approval with the condition that all engineering comments be addressed.
All right, thank you. Anybody have any questions of Mr. Harlecker?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Geisler.
I'll make a motion in planning case 21-43 to approve the preliminary plat and resolution 21-114 granting the final plat approval for Coon Rapids Fire Station Number 3 with the condition that all engineering comments be addressed.
Second.
Motion by Geisler, second by Johnson. Any discussion?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Grisgoviac.
Just for some clarification for the folks at home, when you brought up the site map, the aerial, the site there, you showed that approximately, you know, I suppose a little bit less than one-third of it is going to be where the fire station is, but in the plat, it looks like over two-thirds of the lot is going to be plotted for the fire station, and the outlot A is a smaller portion. Am I seeing that right?
Councilmember, this area here is the existing lot lines. That lot line will go away as part of the plating process and be replaced with the lot lines as you see here. So right now, that lot line goes through right about here.
I see.
And it's getting shipped to the south.
Okay, that adds clarification.
Mr. Mayor.
Apparently, a fire station takes up more space than a nice rink.
That's what I was going to say.
Oh, Councilmember Johnson.
I'm assuming that, that the old lot line was the kind of perimeters of a lot for Cook Arena.
His pardon?
For, for the arena that was there.
Yes.
And, and so now, the new lot line is going to accommodate the much larger facility that's going to go in there. Okay, thank you.
All right. Any other questions for Mr. Harlecker? We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, and that motion carries. And Chief Piper is one step closer to getting his fire station creeping along here.
He's got one. He's just going to get a better one.
Mayor, council, as you heard, the next Monday is our last meeting with the architect under the category of final city input, and at that point, then they'll be putting the construction documents together. So it's moving right along. Thank you for your support. All right. Onto item 11, which is to consider planning case 21-48, consider resolution 21-115 approving preliminary and final plat for, like, they just go DG, Coon Rapids, 10524 Hanson Boulevard. Did you want to, as long as you're up there, Mr. Harlecker?
Certainly.
All right.
This is a approximately 55,000 square foot parcel. It's made up of several smaller parcels. This plat is kind of a companion application for a proposed Dollar General store that'll be considered by the planning commission on Thursday for site plan approval. What they're proposing to do is take this area here, plot it into one lot, and subdivide pieces of it so that they can be incorporated into the right-of-way for the Coon Rapids Boulevard Service Road, which is here. Coon Rapids Boulevard up here, and Hanson Boulevard on the left. And this is a Methodist church to the south. This is the preliminary plat. You can see this is the development area here, and this small triangular piece here will be dedicated as right-of-way for the service road. So really taking this, these kind of jumble of individual lots and plating it into one lot for the purposes of the development. This is the corresponding final plat. Again, these lot lines here are previous lot lines that'll go away when they plat, when they record this plat. And a proposed final plat is consistent with the preliminary plat. At the planning commission meeting held on the 21st, no one spoke at the public hearing, and the commission voted unanimously to recommend approval of the proposed plat with the three following conditions. All engineering comments be addressed, all comments from Anoka County Highway Department be addressed, and park dedication in the amount of $6,200. be addressed, and park dedication in the amount of $6,200 paid prior to releasing the plat for recording.
And much like Councilmember Johnson's point last council meeting, we're bringing another one, taking it, putting it back on the tax rolls.
I like it.
All right, anybody else have any questions of Mr. Harlecker?
So, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Geisler.
I'll make a motion in planning case 21-48 to approve the preliminary plat and resolution 21-115 granting final plat approval for DG Coon Rapids with the three stated conditions. One, all engineering comments be addressed. Two, all comments from Anoka Highway, Anoka County Highway Department be addressed. And three, park dedication in the amount of $6,200 be paid prior to releasing the plat for recording.
Second.
Motion by Geisler, second by Carlson. Is there further discussion on this?
Mr.?
Councilmember Geisler.
Mr. Harlecker, if I remember reading my planning packet correctly, the, this is, the site plan is on the agenda, but it's being postponed till later? Is it a request to defer?
Yes, they are.
So if people are looking for it, then it might not be this Thursday?
They're making changes to the site plan.
Okay, so probably look at the December planning meeting if you want to see the site plan for this. Okay.
All right, any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, and that motion carries. And we are up to the open mic public comment. Here for open mic? No? All right. I don't have any reports on previous open mics, and we are up to other business. Chief Wise, the police department's got all kinds of stuff going on this month, I saw. So I noticed that today you've got the reminder with the weather getting colder, we're seeing an increase in vehicles with keys left running while they are unattended. That's an important note this time of year. And then I'm just, I'm actually just going to turn this over to you because then there was like three things. There was that, and then you've got the car seat clinic again Thursday, and then just kind of looking for the progress on, on the No Shave November.
Oh, yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, of course, we're always doing things aside from dealing with criminal matters, and like you bring up, the car seat clinic is great. Many people have car seats improperly installed in their very important safety device. If you can make an appointment through the city police department's webpage, you can bring your car in and we'll make sure that your car seat is installed correctly for the size and weight of your child. It's vitally important. The No Shave November is going well. I didn't get an update of the dollar amount of the donations, but I know there've been a number of people that have showed up at the front window, and as you recall, and I think you're still wearing a lapel pin.
Yeah, I'm wearing it.
You get a super cool pin if you make a donation of any dollar amount on the website. And again, that link is at the police department page or on our Facebook page, is that you just bring in a copy of that donation and then we'll hook you up with a cool pin that you can wear in support of the police department.
And so far, that organization has taken in $355,693, and Coon Rapids Police Department is 19th on the list of teams, and they're still a couple hundred dollars short of their goal, so anybody that wants to make donations, that would be awesome.
We would, we would love that. That would be great.
Did you want to mention anything about that reminder just to?
Oh, yeah.
The auto theft?
I'm sure people watch the news and they see that there's a number of carjackings. This is separate from that. In Coon Rapids, actually our crime stats, as they have been for a number of years, are excellent, very good as where we stand now versus historically, like in the 80s and the 90s. That said, is that leaving your car running is problematic and it's the number one way vehicles are stolen this time of year. People go to warm them up and then go back in their house, and it's most of the time simply a pedestrian walking by that goes, oh, I got a free ride. They jump in, drive the car wherever they're going, and then they just abandon it there. And it would be great if we could prevent that. So please be careful when you're pumping gas is one, or if you're in your own driveway, consider investing in one of those auto starters that you can push the button, it locks your car, and if somebody jumps in and you step on the brake, the car dies. They're kind of foolproof when it comes to theft, so consider that. There's many local retailers, it's a great Christmas gift, to be honest, if you're thinking of doing something for your family members.
You could probably buy that from a local business.
Yes, you can buy that. I know a number of local businesses that sell and install those things. Yeah, but the side bonus is you get a nice warm car and it's done so in a safe manner.
Sure. Excellent, thank you, Chief.
Hey, Mr. Mayor. And actually, why I'm mad at it is that I wanted to give you an update on the body worn cameras.
Oh, yeah.
We got good news in that the, apparently our shipping bottleneck, our supply chain issue got hammered out, and so we're planning for our implementation to be mid-December. It's, I think, the date is beginning on December 15th where we'll start a rollout. And I think I, I told you before is that we don't need, we don't need to do a small sample size to see how it goes, since we've already used the same system. We're just basically adding the cameras to our staff, and then it just becomes part of our normal routine, adding into our squad cameras. So look for your Coon Rapids officer to be wearing a camera on their vest carrier or on their chest second to third week of December.
Excellent, thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, other business to come before council? Councilmember Geisler?
Yeah, I always check out our city website and there's great things on there. So a couple of key reminders, we are now in November, and yes, it has snowed, and we have parking restrictions from November 1st to April 1st from 2:00 a.m. to 6:00 a.m. So help our police out and actually help our plow drivers out, so if it's ever snowed, don't park between 2:00 a.m. and 6:00 a.m., or you're going to have a nice little note on your car. We've also just started the holiday lighting contest, so that just got posted. Check our city website and decorate up your house and make sure you fill out the forms and let everybody know the categories, and then we'll have a great list coming up here in a few weeks that will talk about all the houses that people can go drive by and see all the great decorations in the city, which is great. And then we have the winter concert series that starts in January, goes January through April, and those tickets are also on sale. That, and they, see if I can get you the lineup, but so we've got Thursday, January 13th, Lady Di and The Power is the first one of the four. Then there's Thursday, February 10th, Backyard Band. Thursday, March 10th, King Wilkie's Dream, and Thursday, April 7th, The Bruski, is it, if I said that right? We'll get the names. But those are great concerts there at the Civic Center here by City Hall, and so go get your tickets. Lots of great things starting up.
And we're going to have another council, council meeting beforehand, but it's a good thing to get in your calendars. This will be the first ever tree lighting this year on December 11th in Coon Rapids over at the Coon Rapids Ice Center, and that day at Riverdale, they're going to have a bunch of events in the afternoon.
Noon until 4:00, Mayor.
What is it?
Noon until 4:00.
Okay, noon until 4:00, and then there'll be things over at the Ice Center with the tree lighting, I think that's like 4:00 to 6:30.
4:00 to 6:30, Mayor.
4:00 to 6:30? Yeah, so just kind of get that December 11th in your calendar for that, and then we'll remind you at our first council meeting. But that's only, that's on the 7th, so it's not a lot of time to plan.
Come out for it, though.
Come out for it. All right, you have a 35-foot tree coming in. All right, any other business to come before council this evening? Matt?
Well, Mayor, council, I suppose I could mention that next week is Thanksgiving already, and city offices will be closed both Thursday and Friday next week, so happy Thanksgiving to everyone. Looking forward to it.
All right, very good, yeah, happy Thanksgiving. Anybody care to get us out of here?
Everybody always looks to me, I'll second that.
Motion by Geisler, second by Johnson to adjourn, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.